Called to order the Board of County Commissioners' work session for October 6, 2015. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Z and C of our friendship among our own national.
Are there any changes that need to come to the agenda today?
Not today.
Okay. Can you motion to approve it?
Second.
The motion is second to approve the work session agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing now all those in favor, seven five say aye. Aye. Motion passes. The general purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate in accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1501. We welcome the public to attend the county work session, but there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. So at this time, we will review the October 8 regular meeting agenda. Charlie?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, first item on your agenda is to hold a public hearing for consideration of ordinance number 1505, and this is to repeal the 1978 Grant County Personnel Ordinance, which is ordinance number 78-6-19. Abby briefly went over this last time. Do you like any more information?
No.
Okay. Next item is a second public hearing for consideration of ordinance number 1506. This ordinance would repeal the 1984 Grant County Employee Relations Ordinance, number 84-09-04. Abby also went over this last time. Okay. Minutes. Financial reports. Linda's sick today, so I'll go over that. Expenditures for a period ending October 5, 2015, a total of $1,649,666.05. This includes accounts payable checks beginning with number 176489, ending with check number 176854, a total of $1,218,134.88. Some items included in that are check number 176534 to Ride Express for August 2015 fleet fuel in the amount of $19,969.17. Check number 176710 to the Town of Silver City for fleet fuel in the amount of $6,025.34. Check number 176650 to Ascend Aviation for Jet A fuel in the amount of $15,785.27. Another check, number 176683 to Ascend Aviation for Jet A fuel in the amount of $16,521.71. Check number 176562 to Engineers, Inc. for North Hurley Road in the amount of $8,962.92. And check number 176574 to New Mexico Human Services Department for fiscal year '16 first quarter payment to the safety net care pool in the amount of $83,137.72. Also included in this expenditure report are payroll checks for period '19 and '20 totaling $431,531.17, for a total of $1,649,666.05.
No questions on this? Page two, report on that. Go ahead.
Moving on to new business, we had a request from Bianca Padilla from the Juvenile Probation Office to present the Grant County Continuum for Strengthening Family and Community Youth Building Programs. She'll give a brief PowerPoint presentation on some of the results and progress they've made with those programs. I don't really remember. These were a couple of new ones that she got in the last grant cycle. Next item is D, approve/disapprove one board member to Hiva Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees. We received one letter of interest from, I'm gonna probably slaughter his name, Magdaleno Manzeneras.
Good.
And that was the only letter we received on that one. The next item on the agenda, E, approve/disapprove one applicant to the Grant County at-large position for the Lodgers Tax Advisory Board. Unfortunately, we'll have to remove, we received a letter from J Salazar. However, he's not a resident of the unincorporated area of Grant County, so he doesn't qualify for this position. So we'll actually need to disapprove his application.
You can just remove it from the agenda.
Or we can just remove it from the agenda.
I think we just take it out of the agenda.
Next item, F, approve or disapprove the deletion of old inoperable Xerox copy machine from the sheriff's office inventory. The sheet's in there. It's just, and I know they've, you replaced it, right?
Oh, yeah.
There you go. We have several changes and additions to the agenda. The next, we would add an item to new business, and this would be a letter requesting cleanup of an area of the Pinos Altos Mining District. And this is Commissioner Ramos. Can you explain that?
They did brought that to us. Over to the Eco Watershed Group. It was, they're requesting that our group write a letter of support for them. And then they also wanted the Southwest County Commission Alliance to do it, and also requesting for us to do it. I told them it had to come into the commission before we do any of the others. And I think it's a real good thing. It's one of the watersheds that really affect a lot of residents downstream from PA. So I think that cleanup is really a good thing for the area.
That'll be a new item for your consideration.
Is that all right?
Moving on to...
Will that letter be available for us before we approve it on?
It was supposed to be in her packet.
Did you get it in there?
I mean, I'd request it.
It is.
It was added in there, and I'll get it on letterhead.
It is in there.
Where did you put it? Oh, it's not in there. Here's a copy of it.
Okay. Go ahead.
We'll give you a draft of that prior to Thursday. Moving on to contracts and agreements. Item G, approve/disapprove agreement A 15-31, agreement between Summit and Grant County Detention Center for Food Service. This is the annual renewal for food service for the detention center.
Mic's been happy with this? With it, so. Very good. Prices what we expect?
They have language in their contract that they can increase their rates. I think it's up to 4%. Is that correct, Mike? 4% for inflation, and there is a slight increase. That tends to happen each year. Price of groceries go up. Next item, H, approve/disapprove agreement A 15-32, agreement between Aging and Long-Term Services and Grant County Senior Centers for Meals Equipment in the amount of $33,670.02. This grant agreement would provide meals equipment for all centers throughout the county, not just for one in particular. Next item, I, approve/disapprove agreement A 15-33, agreement between Aging and Long-Term Services and Grant County Senior Centers for Vehicles in the amount of $75,000. The same thing, not for any particular center, for countywide vehicles. Hasn't...
Our two requirements is we try hard to do business locally, and then we try to keep, what was your fuel mileage?
What's that, 18 miles?
18 miles per gallon.
So yes, we can bid those vehicles out.
Yeah, I'm... If you bid on FOB Silver City, then it'll be apples to apples, because they may be cheaper, but then you gotta send two people to Albuquerque to pick them up, and it takes all day long. All of a sudden, it's not cheap.
Yeah, let's take that into consideration, for sure. We definitely have brought this up a few times already, trying to make sure that we get a fleet that's more economical, and try and get at least an 18 mile per gallon vehicle, just to help ourselves out.
That'll work, Lieutenant.
That's right.
Definitely. Can't go to Albuquerque no more.
You can barely get to San Fe.
Sure. Start the mics over there.
Okay. Any more questions or comments on those?
No.
Okay. Next item, J, approve/disapprove contract renewal for county manager. Any contact is up for renewal?
No.
No. Neither. I know they are. But they're... Also, item K, approve/disapprove contract renewal for county attorney. No, it's not from there either.
I asked for those to be added to the agenda, just so you guys know, because I knew the attorneys was coming up, if not already, I don't know. It's very close to coming up.
And there's no changes to either of those.
Right.
Oh, I thought it was the past negative change.
No. Guys, I thought.
I'm not saying it happened. I'm not. We're pretty much on it today, so be careful.
Can we move on now? Next.
Soon as time we get to talking, it's been a month.
I was wondering why they did so nice to us.
No, it's just seeing you guys. Next item is, I'll scribble that over here, L, approve or disapprove bid number IFBB-15-02, purchase of ambulance for Hiva Regional Medical Center. There has been some change in personnel in the Hiva Regional EMS Department, and so it's going to be our recommendation that we reject this at this time. And so the new director can have an opportunity to review it. But because it was for a specific ambulance, we can't leave the vendors hanging out there holding an ambulance for us that we may or may not approve of. So we would recommend that we reject that bid. Next item, M, approve/disapprove bid IFBB-15-03, purchase of truck for General Services Department. There's a letter of recommendation from Randy Villa to purchase a 2016 4A4 crew cab from Wally Dodge in the amount of $31,816. Now, the only bid we received was from Wally.
He also recommended $30,000.
And this is being paid out of fire funds, and he has that letter of approval as well. Moving on to resolutions. Item N, approve/disapprove resolution R 15-32, a resolution designating the polling places for the 2016 primary and general elections. Ram?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. In your packet, I've included two different resolutions for you to look at. I think the biggest change that we're gonna pursue for this upcoming election cycle is moving to mail-balred election precincts. Those are for our smaller precincts out there, you know, Red Rocks, Hachita, Sapiol Creeks. They have, all have voters, under 100 voters in those precincts, and state statute allows us to actually mail those individuals their ballots rather than having a set polling location. We've had a little bit of cleanup with our voter rolls. We've had a purge. Now that we're gonna essentially add two more commissioners in two districts, we're gonna be sending out mailers to individuals. So we'll be on top of those individuals in those precincts to make sure that they're receiving some mail. It gives them a good opportunity to update their information. That way, when we send out their ballots, we're assured that we're reaching those individuals actually better than we would for an election, because those polling locations are pretty rural areas. Some people have to drive more than 10 miles, 15 miles, or some of those roads are pretty harsh out there, like in Red Rock. So I think we're moving in a positive direction. The reason for the other, for there being two resolutions is we just don't know what we're gonna do with the business of conference center. I don't know if by June, we're gonna have it, be available for us for an election. I know the certificate of occupancy weighs in that. I don't think, I don't know how soon we can get that in order to have a polling location in there. So we've done, we've done one resolution that has it as a voting convenience center, as always, and then one resolution that has, that doesn't have it, just in case, you know, we're kinda looking that it's not gonna be ready. You know, I don't really see it being available.
What have you thought of?
So what we've done is, either way, we're gonna utilize this building as a voting convenience center, and then we've also switched the Pinos Altos location into a voting convenience center. There will no longer be a rural center. We've spoken to Chief Whitmarsh up there. They have internet service now, and we can get on their Wi-Fi and use that. So we're able to switch that to a voter convenience center. So in total, we're either gonna have 10 voting convenience centers or nine voting convenience centers, depending, just, you know, I was in the bid process with the conference center, and just looking at it, I really don't know that we'll be ready by June.
Didn't even get started till September, so...
So I think at this point, we should, you know, I would recommend that we do the resolution that has, that doesn't have the conference center as a polling location, just, you know, just to be on the safe side. And we could do it, and then there'd be, you know, we could get a court order to switch it at the last minute, but you know, it's...
If we know it's gonna be a problem, why would we do it?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So which one's which?
On page two, the difference would be, I, number two, the resolution number two in your, would be the one that we would, I would recommend that we go for. Because one has the conference center. And that's such, you know, the conference center is such a great location for voting. And it will be from now on, and you know, that's the thing, it's gonna even be better, I believe, you know, at that point. We could even maybe have multiple locations in there for voting, so, you know, but for now, I think we've covered it. And now we'll have nine voting convenience centers. That's a little bit more than what we normally have, and then we'll still be heavy in early voting here in our office, like we do for the 30 days prior to the election day, and then absentee voting. So I think there's plenty of opportunity for everyone that wants to cast a ballot, to cast a ballot. And I think, you know, when there's a presidential election, voter turnout tends to come up. So I think we were able to handle what we need with these voting locations.
Veronica, do I have any more questions, Ram? Okay. I agree, we oughta go with number two. Next, really?
Moving on, item O, we would like to remove this item from the agenda. We've discovered some more adjustments that we might wanna make, so we'll put this in front of you in November. Item P, approve/disapprove resolution R 15-34, a resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into contracts with a non-metro area agency on aging. Randy, do you wanna explain where this is coming from?
I got that.
Or Terry? Terry can explain. This is another new requirement.
Terry, you wanna come up and just talk about the RFP?
Good morning. Chairman and Commissioners?
Start, George. I got my one vote, please.
There you go. Good morning. This is just a resolution. We just need your approval to go ahead and put in an RFP. The RFP is due by the end of the month, and they'll start looking at it in November. And I guess we'll get notified yes or no sometime in January. And then if we get it, we'll delist the contract starting in May. And it's for a four-year period, renewable every year.
Anybody else is putting in for it?
Okay.
We've asked. So, okay.
Okay.
You think any questions for Terry? Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Next item, we will add item Q. This is resolution R 15-35. This is a resolution to enter into a cooperative agreement between the County of Grant and the Mexico Department of Transportation for the improvement of roads within Grant County. This is to extend the deadline to December 31, 2016, for the Duck Creek Crossing. Is that correct, Earl?
Yes.
Having trouble getting some permits.
Fish Wildlife, we've been waiting for a permit since last August. Been waiting to get a permit to foot a little water crossing across there. From what I understand, it's in Fish Wildlife's hands now, and I think as soon as they get done with it, we should be ready to go, but when that's gonna happen, I don't know. And the Mexico DOT emailed me and said if I needed an extension, it needed to be done by the 16th of this month, so they can get it up to San Fe. So just to be on the safe side, I wanna go ahead and do this.
Next is approve/disapprove health plan claims from the Internet Fund for the period September 30, 2015. There's a total of, no, this was, you know what, let's hold off on this until, because the backup is missing, and they don't have their dates correct, so let me look at it before. But tentatively, you're looking at 43 claims in the amount of $47,586.16.
Do you think that may change before Thursday?
Yeah, no, it's probably not, but they're seeing it's for September, and they've got August dates, so just make sure we know what they're after. Should be September.
Yeah, it looks like somebody didn't cut and paste properly, did it?
Is that it?
All right, and we'll move into county reports. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, respectfully submit my report through September 9 through October 6, 2015. Item number one, status remain the same. Item number two, facility update. We have no vacancies, currently no vacancies at the facility. Also, we'll be testing for the lieutenant promotion, we can. We have two candidates that have qualified for that position, so we'll be testing them on Thursday. Item number three, on our assessment, the Association of Candidates will come, will be here on the 27th for our site visit. Item number four, on our training update, Sergeant Galindo conducted defensive tactical recertification for the entire department. Also, the Tyrone Fire Department EMT has agreed to conduct first aid training for all the department corrections officers this month. And I and Deputy Anizola will be attending the Association of County Detention Administrator Conference in Rio Negro, and also this month, be towards the end of the month. Item number five, on our inmate support program, coordinator position is being processed, and the candidate has been offered a position and contingent upon the completion of a background investigation. Item number six, item remains the same. Item number seven, our detention statistics, Grant County facility average daily population for the month of September 9 through October 6 is 56, which is 10 less than last month. High population males was 61, three less than last month. High population females is 12, one less than last month. And for this reporting period, there were 56 inmates booked into the facility, which is 10 less than last reporting period, and it shows a decrease in activity. Average length of stay for the reporting period is 11.49 days. Current demographic snapshots that I put in the report for you are the inmate population statistics, census gender information report, yearly snapshot date, and the classification totals and average age. You have any questions on any of those? Any questions? Okay. Item number eight, on our monthly agency arrest totals, and this is for the month of September, Silver City Police Department had 88, Grant County SO 19, New Mexico State Police had nine, Bayard Police 11, Santa Clara had five, and Hurley Police had five. Item number nine, the detention facility conducted 23 district court transports, Division One, a magistrate court with 15, Division Two magistrate court with four, Silver City Municipal Court two, Santa Clara had zero, Bayard Municipal Court we had two. Total number of medical transports conducted during this period were seven, for a total of 53 total transports we conducted for the month of September. Item number 10, on our utilization and occupancy, the offense levels were 19 felonies, 58 misdemeanors, others, which include probation violation and warrants, were 60, for a total of 137. Total hours in custody at $29,059.44, and sentencing statistics again is much lower than compared to last. That's my report, sir.
Thank you very much, Mike. If you want any questions on any of it? Okay, then we'll move on to Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We've been working pretty diligently with Mexico Finance Authority to get all the information they need for our Colonia's projects, the North Hurley and Tyrone projects. They're gonna move forward with funding. I'm assuming they're probably gonna go to a bond sale soon, and so we have to have quite a bit of information for them and their attorneys to move forward. We also have a, on September 18, the solar array for the North Hurley wastewater project went out for bid. Next week, on October 14, the Rosedale Utilities portion of the Rosedale project to go out for bid, we did have approval from the Drennan Water Bureau of New Mexico, and they're also working on us with a floor, a floor plan for the Baton Memorial Park building that the veterans have requested. Also, I attended a Waters of the U.S., the Clean Water Rule, the Western Land Owners Alliance, put together a tour and discussion, and there was regulatory people there from the Armicorp Engineers able to explain the difference in what the current rule is versus the old rule. There wasn't too many changes that affected the local governments, except for the fact that we still don't have a definition on what is actually the jurisdiction of the United States or the Corps, so. It was pretty evident, though, that the county wouldn't have to really change anything they're doing now. There could be potentially some more permitting that had to be done, but they did mention some things to prevent us from having to get permits on all of our maintenance type projects, so.
Do you think that'd be the first thing, is want a definition of their jurisdiction?
Well, and that's one of the things that we brought up to the agency, is that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife was able to put together a GIS program that you can actually get online and identify where potential critical habitat is, and we suggested that they use the same format in order to identify the jurisdictional waters. And, well, the definition was kind of unclear. We had a lot of ranchers and people that own farms, and the old definitions were clear in what would claim jurisdiction, but now they're kinda adding on all the tributaries, and those are the things that haven't been identified. And that's, that's pretty much the difference in the two, as far as the permitting and the rule itself changing how you obtain those permits or how you, that hasn't changed, just solely on the jurisdiction. And so they took that back to their offices and said they try and potentially get a GIS program similar to what they had. That was a recommendation that came out of our talks. Today, we're gonna have a conference call on continuity of care with BFA to see if it's gonna be eligible for an economic development project, CDVG. So hopefully, that'll be positive, and we can get started. I'm prepared to put that thing together, and I'm assuming that we would have that thing together by the next commission meeting, if we can get their approval. Also, we've been working on both the Wind Canyon and the Loma Verde. I spoke with Jake earlier today. He said that hopefully by Friday, the bids for Loma Verde will be out, so go through the bid process, then we can go right into the ordinance process to try and get that thing up, you know, for construction, that would assume that, but in December, somewhere on that... In December, somewhere around that time, hopefully we can get construction going on the Loma Verde.
You know, that Wind Canyon, you know, the flooding we had there last month, someone confronted me that well, if it had, you know, the project completed, that wouldn't have happened. And I explained to him, and you may want to talk about it, that in fact that had nothing to do with the area that we would be responsible for if in fact it's completed. Or when it's completed.
I don't know where the flooding occurred, but we certainly, I spoke with Ray this morning. He's hoping to get all of those notices for the public hearing out by Friday. So hopefully in November, we'll have the public hearing and start to move forward on that process also.
The flooding was just on the outside of the, of the park that we'd be responsible for. You may want to...
Yeah, I think, I know what you're talking about because I got several calls on that too. But I think that part there, they're wanting to incorporate from, from 180 down to that deal. That's where the flooding occurred.
Right.
And I think they want to incorporate that also somewhere or another on there.
So people from that area went out and fixed it, did a good job.
Yeah, I think that the, most of the time, the area that's mostly in concern is the low water crossing, right there when you enter the subdivision itself. And that actually will be a portion of the assessment district. And matter of fact, that's one of the things that elevated the costs because it has to be a low water crossing built there.
Then wasn't there some kind of change in something else as far as that project is concerned? As far as the, who is going to have to pay or how much is going to have to pay or...
Well, what, what the residents of the, of that subdivision have done is they actually went out to the residences all throughout the Wind Canyon 2 subdivision. And also the residents that are outside of the subdivision there and asked them to assist in the, in the assessment district because they utilize that entrance. And so that's why it's taken so long. We have 122 residences that they're going to, that have been incorporated into the assessment district and so. So that's, that's a pretty lengthy job when you come... We've had, I think there was 20, 20 some in the, in the, when we had it hand over. There's 40 in the Loma Verde and now there's 122. So this is a substantial larger assessment district and so it's taken, it's taken quite a bit longer. But Ray said he should be done by Friday, get those things out, and we should meet that November 12th deadline. And that's, that's all my report, Commissioners.
Any questions? Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This business is usual down there, we're getting caught up on some patching and hitting those dirt roads real heavy since we've been getting some moisture now. We did get a road built for emergency evacuation for the Fort Baird Hospital down to the Baton Building down there. And Southwest went in and got it paved. They did a good job, so that's, that's ready to go to on there. Other than that, just...
Was that the Department of Health?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I turned in the big work to Linda for the reimbursement on it, so.
And you and I already talked, but I'm going to mention it for the public. We've got to really make sure the state doesn't stick this with that bypass road, that thing's just falling apart.
Yeah, I'm keeping on top of it. As a matter of fact, I'm going to set up a meeting with Brian Tortis. He's the engineer for the highway department out there.
At least fix my half, Ron's side.
Hey, what do you have? Just fix both of them.
There's a, there's a big hole that runs underneath the road that's, that's starting to deteriorate too. And I think it's, it's having something to do with the extra amount of traffic that's on it, on that too.
Way, way more traffic than it was ever built for.
Yeah.
Well, you've already given my side, my constituents on my side, the chair's phone number.
But they've been patching up pretty good. To me, it seems like it'd be better to go in there and fix it right now.
Problem is, now they're having some great failure.
Yeah, because it's going to cost them more at the end to fix it than what it would cost them now.
Every rain.
Well, they got Mountain States here, they ought to just move on over. Yeah. Other than that, it's all about the...
Thanks Earl. Any questions? No? Okay, Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just want to start really with the county fair. We got through that okay. With no major issues, as all you know, we did have a water line with Justin and his crew and Public Works and Mace Hardware and everybody else you've heard about. I want to really reach out to them and thank them for the efforts that, that we're able just to, to keep that going, so. I did attend some trainings at the Fire Academy in Coral along with some other volunteers a couple of weeks back. That was some good training for structural firefighter training, some liquid propane type training, evac car extrication classes, EMS classes, and all for free. So that was a good, good job by a lot of the volunteers that decided to go up and take that. Conference center, pretty much got that cleaned out. We're just going to wait and still have a couple of things in there we just adjusted and are going to take a walk through probably before the end of the week. Try to make sure that that thing is completely cleared out and then ready for construction whenever they get that date started. I want to thank Anthony and Terry. I worked on the ICIP time for the senior centers, got that in on a timely manner. They asked for an extension, received that, and so that's been taken care of. Anthony had a lot of help and Terry, I want to thank him too for the help when we got that, that done. Governor Caminos, we just started a new budget, as you know, they're federally funded, so that budget started October 1st. So we did make some changes to the program. Yes, it's going to affect some, but not a lot. I think people get used to the route changes and we'll move forward with that. We had the Eco-Water Shed meeting and the CWP plan came up again and we want to continue that as a living document. I want to ask the commission for a little support as we go forward with this, making sure that the core team, which is all the agencies, Forest Service, State Fire, BLM, State Land Office, and obviously Grant County, be part of that core team. So that we make sure that that living document stays, stays open and along with public comment as we start moving forward on that. I want to thank the Commissioner, Commissioner Ron Hall and Commissioner Ramos for the speaker system out at the shooting range. They're really pleased with that. I told them to make sure they'd meet stealthy, the, the board over there and to thank you because it was something that was needed, safety issue, and hopefully we got that corrected. So again, I want to thank the two Commissioners for, for helping fund in that. Airport runway project, we're having a conference call this Thursday in the red room and to see where we're at with that, with Bohannon Houston, which is the architect firm, engineering firm that's going to be working with us on that. So we'll be having a meeting there on Thursday. I think that's all I really have. I just want to reach out to the departments and make sure that you guys get your inventory off the list before you bring it to Public Works. Because we get a lot of stuff that's stacked up that we can't really dispose of because it hasn't been brought in from the commission to actually dispose of it. So I just want to, you know, reach out to all the departments to make sure that they do that. Unless there's anything else, that's all I have.
Questions for Randy?
No, I just want to bring up on the Corcamino's route and what have you. There is a gentleman that requested to, to look at the route that goes from Grant County over to, almost to the border. I guess there's a stop down in, in, I guess it stops in Demme and then it goes down to almost Columbus? And he wanted to see if you can look at that, at that route, see if we can leave a little earlier. Because I guess there's about 13 guys that'll start using it again if they can just adjust the date. But I'm going to give him your number, if that's okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ramos, yeah, I'll look into that, just give my number. And really, that's, that basically runs within Luna County. So yeah, there is a, a system, but it's not a daily route that goes from Silver to Demme, but it is from Demme to Columbus and back.
Okay.
We'll look at that, give me a call and I'll try to work with him as best we can. Again, most of the, as you all know, looking forward, it's all based on the budget and what we have and how we run that. So we are looking at changes, so we want to make sure that, you know, there was some rumor services going away, it's not. We're going to continue to work at it, we're going to continue to try to make sure that the funding is reached out as best we can and make service to the people of Grant, Luna, and Hidalgo County. So, you know, obviously Grant County is taking the lead on this and we're going to continue to try to make it the best service that we can for the people that really need it.
Do we have any other agreements that we need to work on with the other communities before it comes to Corcamino's? Right now, I really like that idea on being able to charge a fee, the way they were setting up the...
Originally when we were talking about going to contract?
Yes.
And I think we've kind of backed away from that right now. Everybody has put in the amount of money that we've asked for.
Good, good, good.
We're still looking at that, Randy and I. Abby's, Abby's drafted a draft, a rough draft contract that we're looking at. But we're, it's, we, we're already into the next fiscal year budget, so we have some more time to take a look at that and really identify what needs to be in that contract and what the actual amounts that we need to ask for the entities in order to make this cash flow itself without there continuing to be cash match shortages.
Yeah, that's great. I also would like to see us look at an administration fee, that way we could keep handling everything for the whole group.
Right, okay.
Yeah, the biggest problem with the whole deal is, is the cash match to get the amount that's required to run it still isn't enough to run it properly.
Right.
The, the state has just not stepped up to the plate and kept their, their amount the same, so.
And Mr. Chairman and members of the board, in the best role of my goal is going forward in this new fiscal year start is to try to find options to go after more cash match money. However that is, I attended the Freeport-Mackinac grant program that they had and the initial kickoff meeting with that, we're going to look at that. We're going to look at reaching out in different, different ways. And so that is our biggest issue, is trying to find a cash match. We understand that each year with the, we did get a new bus in, that is going to start rolling out here in the next week or so. But we, that's, that's our name, we have buses that have a lot of miles on them. The, you know, the maintenance on them is costing us more and more. So with that, that really eats up at the budget. And so we have to make sure, you know, even though gas prices are down, people say they're saving a lot of money. Yeah, we are, but then it goes back into the maintenance of, of the bus. And I want to thank guys in the Road Department because they're handling a lot of that and so it's saving us money there. But again, it all comes back to the cash match. And if we can get that, if we can find ways to make sure that we equalize that and everybody's at an even kill when it comes to cash match, then I think the program will continue to be supported in that manner. But until we can get that, we don't want to continue to have to do ver cons back. And when we do that, then the program's losing. So I want to make sure that we stay on that, that's one of my goals in this next, this new fiscal year that just started October 30th.
Thank you, Randy. You have anything? Alright, move to Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to report, we did have a successful fair this last couple of weekends ago. There was a little bit of activity going on out there. We had a few problems at the dance, typical with people drinking alcohol out there and that. We did have to escort some people out of there, my guys did. And I want to thank the staff that was out there and I also had reserve deputies that were out there assisting with that. And I want to thank them because they do come out and volunteer their time, helping us out with special events. One of the issues we did encounter out there was communication. And we're diligently working on that radio communication problem that we have right now. I have been every day dealing with the civil communications and the Forest Service to try and get our radio equipment installed. Actually, it's all installed in Signal Peak. We're just waiting on a few things to come through. When CenturyLink set up the line, they set up the wrong line. So that was one thing that we're actually working on, hoping that they get that done. And once that's done, we should be operational and I'm hoping that fixes our radio communication problem. But that's something that I've been on every day trying to get that resolved. I also want to report, currently, we are having biennial training that's required by the state for us to keep our certification. Currently, we are doing three days of training this week here locally and it's my in-house instructors that are providing this. It's not only for my staff, but we also have the Silver City and all the municipalities attending this training free of charge. We need to stay up to date and keep our certifications going. The last thing I want to report on, our vault, it's finally slowly but surely coming along. Today, they're actually installing the doors and after that, I don't know what's next. We did have the rain and so far haven't encountered a leak as of yet. I'm hoping that it, that it starts to settle and hopefully everything works out. We're looking forward to the day we finally get to move in there, get our stuff moved, make an easy transition. I'm going to need some help when we do move the stuff from the vault down there. So I'm going to get with Randy, maybe get some staff from Public Works to help us with the transition. But slowly but surely, we're, we're trucking along and hopefully here soon, we'll get to move. And I just want to thank you guys for, for putting that in, in place and it's going to make our job a little bit easier. Other than that, I just want to thank my staff for everything that they do.
So you're not going to be using the prisoners to move the stuff out of the vault?
I was going to ask you, are you going to have a protocol for custody of the evidence when you're being, when it's being moved?
Yes, we are. We're actually going to move...
Move fast, Mike.
We're, we're going to move one bin at a time and it's going to be removed and entered and that. It's all going to be done properly in the right way.
Inventory both places?
Yes, it's all going to be, and we're going to do it. It's not going to be a one-shot deal, we're going to take our time with it, make sure everything's documented correctly entered and everything's accounted for that's in our, on our inventory.
Okay, any questions for Chair?
Chair, do you have the same electronics as the city does as far as their evidence is concerned? How it's logged in, logged out each time and destroyed?
As far as I, as I know, I think we do. We're up, up, our system is pretty up to date. We actually have to scan our, our evidence in and out and it gets registered into a computer. A sticker printout comes out and we attach it to our, our evidence.
Sounds like the same.
Yeah, so I think we're pretty much the same.
It's a good system.
It is a good system. We haven't had any problems with it, so we're hoping with the transition, if we continue to...
Should makes the testimony easy in court.
Yes, it does.
You're going to find stuff from the bottom of that courthouse, you haven't, nobody's seen in a hundred years, so.
Right, that's what I'm afraid of.
You'll probably find Billy's kid's gun.
That's what I said to Mike when I...
Yeah, Billy's kid was a little dead when that building was built, but... Mr. Sessions?
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, on that note, we still need to go to the basement there at the county courthouse also. They've been requesting not only the tax information from the 70s, 60s, 50s, also the notices and evaluations. So we're going to take a trip out there also, so, so glad maybe we and you can go together there.
We actually looked at a little bit last year at INMAC and there's some people out there that'll, that'll put that on either film or, or digitize it one way or another. And I, I do think that's probably something that we really need to think about in our next budget is getting that. Because I did, I did tour all that and there's a lot of stuff down there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, thank you very much, really appreciate that. I've actually found actual deeds in our notices and evaluations, so it's, it is a little shocking. For starters, thank you. I, I want to give really good thanks to my two deputy, Jennifer Baraza and our new, actually parcel. We've been doing a lot of parcel mapping by Tracy Bernstein. And they go way beyond their line of duties and I really appreciate them more than anything else. My other right-hand man is Mr. Trujillo, my chief appraiser. She has been communicating with Tyler's technology for the last 28 days, so it's been a long 28 days. I would like to introduce my appraisers. They've been out in the field on a regular basis and would you mind coming up to the podium, gentlemen? Go ahead, man. I'm going to introduce yourselves, you guys, okay?
Hi, I'm Bronn Gary.
Gabriel Carano.
Hello, my name is Matthew Meyer. Thank you.
I would like to hold on for a second. The reason I wanted to bring them in is because they've been out in the field like, on a regular basis. And I would like the people from TV land to see the wonderful faces that go knock on the door and pick up the information. And, and at this moment, I would just like to state that we've done the TIF downtown, thanks to Gabe and Bronn. We have about 90% of the data entry on commercial properties and we spent some time training and getting the system together. Matthew has really done a heck of a good job on our sales. And, and thanks to your young daughter, she has been a very big asset in the Sessions office. And sometimes Anthony puts her to work and she, she's done a heck of a job. We still need to work a little bit on the comps, but other than that, everything has been working just fine. But gentlemen, thank you very much for what you guys do and I really appreciate you guys.
Thank you for your service, gentlemen. You got to see Bronn here.
You got to see Bron hit a baseball. I can't even see it. So we're about ninety percent data entry on the commercial appraisal, and a hundred percent field visit on, um, on the TIF and the MRA downtown, so we're sitting. Uh, now, we're starting off on the, uh, MRA TIF down in Santa Clara, that should probably take us about a, we, we're going to have to do the field visit and, uh, the data entry. The interesting thing about this is I'm actually picking everything up, tax exempt properties, everything, we're looking over the land, every part of the appraisal on that. Our exempt properties are also being picked up, our billing permits, uh, we have to get them in by the end of December, we're working diligently, thank you for Misty on that one, we're constantly on the field also, and, uh, we are also working on our reappraisal for the year two thousand and seventeen. I have some really sad news, and, uh, I really don't like disclosing bad news, but, uh, our SQL migration with Tyler that started on September 8th, two thousand and fifteen, has been a complete nightmare, and, uh, we have been able to perform our jobs properly, and, uh, we're still working on that at this moment. Uh, our sales searchings for our comps, uh, has resulted like about thirty percent on a three-year search, and that is not good news. Uh, our appraisals are, we cannot, we cannot depreciate fifty percent on our land, uh, land models, adjustments, and they're not calculating just on residential property zone. Commercial's working okay, even though they've changed all cost tables. Uh, right now on manufactured homes, uh, we can't do any appraisal at this moment, so we're just waiting on that. And Steve, I want to thank you for being so patient, uh, we haven't been able to roll over our tax rules, uh, uh, due to the fact, because of this migration, and, uh, we will do it on Wednesday, the 7th of October, two thousand and fifteen, so if you're going to be there until midnight with me, Steve, I hope you hang out, have your dinner. Uh, we do have a conference in Ruidoso for the Assessors Affiliat on the 13th, 14th, and 15th of, uh, of, uh, October in Ruidoso, and I guess Tyler will hear a few things from, uh, the assessors around statewide, because it's not only our county, but it's the majority of the county statewide, so it's just not our situation. I would like to come up with a correction on the senior fees, it's thirty-two thousand dollars combined income for the sixty-five years of old. Uh, it was brought up that, uh, somebody stated it was thirty-five thousand, but it's actually thirty-two thousand combined income. Uh, we've had quite a few events, I want to thank Grant County for your proclamation for the Walk for the Heroes, thank you, Mr. Ramos, uh, you attended, did the walk, and we really appreciate you being there. And, uh, I do thank all the vets that participated, uh, being the main vet, it was really nice to talk to and, uh, and be around these vets, especially the Vietnam Vet Chapter 358, Armando Amador does a heck of a good job, and I, I thank him, I thank Grant County Sheriff's Department for joining up, and, uh, Hurley, and Santa Clara. I do have a high schedule for the Grant County Trail Group this Sunday, uh, near Cherry Creek Road, North Pinos Altos, please come see us, come, come join us, come out with us. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, I kind of reflecting his sentiments about the, uh, migration that we had, uh, we had requested to delay the migration until after the tax rollover, um, but for whatever reasons, they said it had to be done, um, we had some issues that he's not voiced, uh, we had approximately twenty-five checks that actually ended up being returned by the bank because of the issues with the migration, uh, which we, once we found out the issues that we got with Tyler and got corrected, um, you know, that, that's kind of not a very good thing to be having to deal with, but luckily we caught it right away, we were able to notify all the people that we had issued the checks to, and they knew what was going on, and, um, we've gotten that corrected. There are still issues going on with it, where people on the internet cannot access accounts, if their account is paid in full, um, it doesn't show up, and we can ring it up, but they can't through the internet, so, um, we're still hoping to get that straightened out, so, um, uh, we will be having, um, a tax sale next Tuesday through the state property tax division, um, we're not sure exactly what's happening with all of that because the state, it's their sale, they, they do their thing, they, they red-tagged over eighty, uh, items, uh, however, forty-one of them showed up on the actual tax, uh, sale list. Of those, twelve have already been taken care of by residents and, um, have been taken, just marked as paid, we, it's up to the state to take them off the list, so... So, uh, we're, on the 13th of October, next Tuesday, at, uh, eleven o'clock here in this room, we'll have that sale, uh, or not us, but the state of New Mexico will be having the, the delinquent tax sale.
And that's kind of a buyer beware sale.
Well, let them know that, because it does not relinquish any other encumbrances on any property.
Yeah, well, like I say, there's, there's, it's, it's difficult to, to understand what the state is going by, because of those, like I said, the eighty-sixth got red-tagged, there's some that, when you really look at them, you question why are they on there, but that's their decision, not, not ours, and, um, things that are not on the sale list that we feel should have been, um, but again, it's their, it's their sale.
Tax and Rev?
Yes, Property Tax Division, and I've, I've given you the reports, um, one of the reports that you should have gotten last month, and then the current reports, and I call your attention to the third page, um, which will be basically the final two thousand and fourteen report that you'll get, um, because of the rollover, of course, and, um, you know, we're at ninety-two point one percent collection, uh, for two thousand and fourteen. For the ten-year period, we're at ninety-six point six percent. The very bottom lines, that will be, what will be dropping off the tax rolls, again, we question the state of New Mexico as to why the delay, and, and we only have three properties on the tax sale that have two thousand and five taxes due on, there's a lot more than that, uh, and, but for whatever reason, they just don't address that, so, we will be losing ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-five cents county's portion when that's, those, uh, two thousand and five taxes are deleted, so, I don't know if there's anything, I've been trying to talk to Howie, I've been trying to talk to even Mr. Zimmerman, but we, they don't hear, we need, we need tax reform in the state of New Mexico, the way that the tax and revenue runs the property tax division is very, you know, there's no, no rhyme or reason, so, uh, hopefully we can move ahead with, uh, New Mexico, uh, associations and counties to try to put some direction or bring some light to what's going on, and, uh, we can get that corrected. Um, like I say, we, we will be having the tax rollover on Wednesday, um, we'll be running our, hopefully, running our part of it without any glitches, uh, the assessors' office has been working, they've been running their stuff and finding all kinds of problems and having to correct them, so, I hope we don't have any issues, but hopefully we can get the tax, um, the tax bills out, we're going to try to get them out as soon as we can to the printer so they can get them out to the public, um, it will be, on the notice, it will say that, that, the taxes are due November the 10th, which is, you know, statute, that's, that's by the statute, and of course, they have their, a thirty-day grace period, which they, they will not become delinquent until December the 10th, and that's when the, the penalty and interest will take effect, so we'll have, starting your, your report for October, you'll have a different, um, you know, it'll be twenty fifteen taxes, and we'll start from scratch again, so, um, if you have any questions or...
Nope, you explained it well, thank you.
Thank you.
Rob?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner. Just wanted to mention that I'll be sending some staff next week to, uh, the Clerk's affiliate, they'll be meeting in Las Cruces, I'll be attending as well, at least one of the days, just, uh, getting ready, the clerks throughout the state are going to be getting ready for the upcoming election next year, working on a little bit of, uh, reform for some election rules that we have out there, trying to get some stuff cleaned up to help, uh, all the clerks throughout the state have good, successful elections, um, just want to thank my staff for all the hard work, getting ready for, uh, sending, to send out the notices to everybody once we, uh, find out which districts are which, I think that's going to happen next month, I believe. So, uh, once we get all of that situation, we'll be sending out, uh, some information through the mail, uh, we'll be posting it in the newspapers, on the website, make sure that our voters are ready for the upcoming presidential election next year, so other than that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Rob, any questions for Rob? Okay, Charlie?
There will be, uh, the town of Silver City is hosting a public hearing in this room tomorrow evening at six, to its informational public hearing on the Ridge Road sewer project that we did the ordinance for that would bring those, um, residents, um, that are in the ETZ on to the city's sewer system, but there's been a lot of questions from the residents and people in that area, so, just a, uh, informational hearing tomorrow at six. Um, we did get our final budget approval from DFA, um, with a couple cautionary notes to, uh, keep an eye on copper prices and to ensure that we will continue to pay back the, uh, debt incurred of Cora Caminos. Also, um, to jump on the beat-up taxation and revenue bandwagon, uh, we did receive an amended grocery receipts tax, um, last month, um, Steve diligently tried to get information, I made some calls trying to get information, um, there was an amended return which affected our grocery receipts revenue, we ended up having to pay some of the loans that would have normally been paid from that revenue, and unfortunately, um, it's a losing battle and it's extremely frustrating, they won't give you any information as to whether it will happen again, who it was, why it happened, um, the state of New Mexico is a self-rejarring state, so basically, it's none of our business what they did or didn't do, um, it's, it's extremely frustrating, um, I've encountered this before, and you, you don't get any answers all the way from Secretary Padilla all the way down, it's, it's another thing that maybe we need to continue to, um, work with our local legislators to make sure that we take a look at, um, tax reform in that area, I know, um, Inmac is working on that, but it's, you know, when you, you expect to have budget and revenues come in, and then all of a sudden you don't get it, it, it really hurts, um, so that was last month's return that came back.
There's some questions out there, far back to the...
And, you know, there's that city of Eunice versus Tax and Rev that, I know there was an appeal that was just decided on and not, but I think that goes back to whether or not the city of Eunice had to pay that money back, or it's kind of a complicated, but the same situation, um, so I just wanted you to be aware of that, and that may be something that we need to have discussions with our legislators, um, to maybe look at changing that as well.
Yep.
Um, other than that, business as usual in our office, staff, any questions you might have?
How's the audit come?
Oh, the auditors were, uh, in and out in a week, and, um, that's coming along well, so we'll just be waiting for his report.
Didn't it do sooner this year than normal or something?
I think it's a week earlier this, this year, but they were in and out in a week, and things went very smoothly, so we'll just be, uh, just be, just have a report.
And the contractors, is, started at the commissions there, or starting quick, soonly?
Quick and soonly, I need to follow, I need to follow up with Kevin, because I was under the assumption that they may have started by now, but I don't believe anything's happened yet, so I'll follow up with him today.
Okay. Any other questions?
You know, uh, some issues have been brought up as far as the affiliates are concerned, and then what Charlie has just talked about, it will be having an Inmac meeting, it's a quarrel, uh, the 16th, and so if you'll get to me in writing, please, any kind of issues you'd like for me to bring, bring up, I'd be more than happy to do that.
That's it, okay. Uh, then I guess after that, we will move into executive session, if I can get a motion to do so.
So, bud.
There's a motion, a second, to move into executive session, any discussion? Seeing none, all those favors, say five, say nine, Rob, can you do a route, roll call for us?
Commissioner Ramos, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Casten, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
I am.
Commissioner Hall, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Aye.
Okay, we are in now an executive session, all we're going to talk about is the personnel, is personnel, county managers, goals and performance, and we will adjourn from executive session.